Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the oath for Police Officer Todd Bristol, so.
How are you?
Good, and yourself, sir?
So, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I am Todd Bristol.
Aye, Todd Bristol.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the U- United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Con-
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota and its laws.
The Con- And its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinance.
And faithfully serve my agency and community.
Faithfully serve my agency.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right. Congratulations there, Todd.
Congratulations, Todd.
Congratulations.
Very happy to be here.
Welcome.
I'll be the one that, uh, you see doing this on a regular basis.
Already.
Okay, next on the agenda, the approval of the regular agenda. So moved, is there a second? There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Sean. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, uh, number three, the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, motion by Sean, seconded by Maggie. Any discussion?
I had a comment on, uh, just the minutes. The minutes regarding the appeal of notice of violation. I don't feel like there's anything wrong in the minutes. But I'm not sure that it, um, I'm not sure we really accomplished what we meant to do in the sense of, um, taking action on the appeal. We changed what we're mowing, but it seems that to close the circle on it, we should probably grant the appeal for this resident.
I would agree with that, that that's probably a proper take in that matter. Um, we did basically say the city would start mowing it again, but the violation had happened prior. So that's probably an intent, correct interpretation is that we should grant the appeal at that point.
Grant the appeal and rescind all of the notices?
No, I mean, I think you're granting the appeal for the fact that the the grass got tall. It it's kind of an odd issue because he did end up mowing it. And so it's it's there ended up not being a fine of any sort. The city didn't go out and mow. And so so it is a weird issue there in that while there was a violation and he appealed the violation, he then complied. And so we didn't fine him or anything in this case, but I suppose because he requested an appeal, we should grant the appeal.
I'll make a motion that we grant the appeal to the gentleman in regards to the.
Well, I I would just point of order here, just, I I'm supportive of taking the action, but we're within the.
Yeah, consent agenda.
On a previous motion.
Yep.
So either do it later or after.
I I I will make a, I'll make a note to bring it up in miscellaneous.
Okay.
That we can do at that point.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks for that. Mm-hmm. Next item is number five, approval of the geotechnical soil boring evaluation contract.
So, uh, inferno, you have the geotechnical proposal from, uh, Braun InterTech. We did request proposals from Braun InterTech and AET. Uh, only Braun provided a proposal for us. Uh, this would be for soil borings on the two thousand and twenty-three project area, so that's the project area we approved back in the May, May, mid-May council meeting. So, uh, this would be for six soil borings, fifteen fifteen, fifteen feet each, and it gives the information to to have for the next project. We do recommend approval of this proposal. That is in the amount of, uh, five thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars lump sum.
Any questions of the council?
I just had a question on the narrative on the, um, fourth paragraph where it talks about since two thousand and five with good results, what what does that mean with good results?
Results probably is not necessarily the right terminology here, but, uh, uh, Braun InterTech has done for much every soil exploratory project in the city of New Prague since two thousand and five. Uh, whether it's doing the soil borings or doing soils testing, so we've, we've worked them a lot and they've done a lot of good work for the city of New Prague, is guess what we're getting at with that with that term.
Is satisfactory compli- satisfactory compliance with the what?
Yeah, well, what's necessary, yeah, and it's.
Come in lower than bidder, anything?
They've they've generally been the lower bidder and they've they've had good results.
Lower than their bid.
No one's been lower than them during that time, correct. And that's that's part of why you probably didn't get a proposal from AET is I think Braun InterTech has gotten every proposal for the last fifteen years, so they've kinda, they, that's why they didn't present this, uh, that's why they did not provide a proposal this time around.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Somebody want to offer the, make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract for geotechnical evaluation with Braun InterTech on behalf of the city of New Prague.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Bruce Wolf made the second. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Okay, skip back one.
Anything else?
Skip back one item there, I didn't have anything on the agenda for the two thousand and twenty-two, the Columbus Avenue project, but I thought I'd just provide a general.
Sure.
General update for everybody, what's going on, so. Uh, the, uh, right now, the contractor is, has finished all the sanitary sewer and water main installation on the project. Um, they have a little bit of storm sewer to install and then south four blocks, not much, and there's a little bit left on the north side of the project. Between Fourth Street and Twelfth Street, that's our our reclaimed portion of the project. Uh, they've installed most of the curb and the south two blocks of the project, they're doing a lot of the driveways and some of the sidewalk right now. Um, they're gonna jump back up, I think still today, and finish the, um, driveways for the for the school, um, up near Twelfth Street, so we want to make sure that they're they're ready to go as soon as possible, so. Utilities, uh, utility work is getting close to complete. Most of the work remaining in the projects are related to putting the street back together essentially at this point. Uh, there's a lot of sidewalk in this project, a lot more sidewalk than there used to be. Uh, so there's a lot of a lot of concrete work still to go, but, uh, um, still hoping to hit that substantial completion date, which I believe is the twenty-fifth.
You saw them tonight, they were by Saint Wensley and the big sidewalk on there and.
Yep, I imagine they'll go pretty late tonight.
I do have a couple of things because I did go up and down that job site today.
Okay.
Um, it does seem to be slowing down a little bit, so I I assume that you had gotten the four blocks of utilities in. You got the storm drain in there.
Yep.
Down at the, uh, north end, um, I didn't see anything on any of the bids or anything, um, on the, uh, nature trail being wrecked down at the end. Can you tell me what's going on with that?
Uh, there's a little bit of work on the blacktop trails, not for the trails, but we have some, uh, manholes that underneath the trail. And, um, they're repairing those and they had to take out a decent amount of blacktop to do that, so. We have some, there's a storm sewer on the west side of Columbus Avenue that goes underneath the trail for a good stretch of that area. And, uh, uh, that's probably what you're seeing there is just in those areas, we'll be patching it back.
The the next question I have for you is, um, on the nature trail, when you first get on there, you've got, uh, the pond on one side of the road, the pond on the other side of the road. They're cutting into the nature trail, and I don't know why they're pumping water from one place to another around there. But isn't that an ecosystem that's set up? I mean, can we just? You know, there there's two places where that where that's happening, and I just don't know where the water's being pumped from and into.
Okay, I I I didn't, I didn't see the pumping myself to see what was going on, I know the.
Well, the guy that was digging the hole, I mean, it was three hours that I, and I seen him dig a hole about this size, so.
Okay.
He's moving real slow, right there by that guy, he'll probably be there tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I think the the storm sewer in that area is lower than we would like it to be, we've kind of, we're, we have a situation where we're not replacing the entirety of the storm sewer, so we're just replacing it in certain spots, mostly just structures. And so we're kind of controlled by that elevation or the depth of what's there today. And what's there today is probably deeper than it should be, so it's below the water elevation, so if they're having to pump, you know, I think they're pumping, uh, they could be pumping some of that water just to to allow them to install the structure and then they stop pumping afterwards. I hope they aren't chasing their tail pumping, trying to pump down a pond, because that's not gonna do anything. I think they'd be pumping out just enough to complete their work.
They want to look and see what's going on, or?
Sure, sure.
Just to follow up on that, the east end is considered a wetland, the west end is the living lab, that's actually, the wetlands controlled by the pond on the west side of the living lab. So everything flows to the west, and once the living lab fills up enough, then it goes into the creek, um, on the west side of the living lab, so. They all work together kind of to keep the elevation at the same height, so. Like I said, when they were digging that structure on the east end, um, to in, they were installing a new inlet where they do have to kind of move some water around just to get that end of that pipe in without having to stand in to feed the water.
And there's not gonna be any contamination between that water and the?
They'll face, they have to turn in permits to do all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there was a stormwater permit on this project.
All right.
With the small, small impact we have in there, we would, we would have to submit a permit specifically for pumping.
And today is August first, um, um, you still expect to be done on time?
It's gonna be close, I mean, there's no way around that. Uh, the contractor, if I go according to the the schedule they provided us, they're probably within about three or four days of the schedule they provided us at the beginning of construction. So, I mean, they're they're close, I think they need to pick it up a little bit to hit that schedule. But I do think they're in good shape to at least get the north side of the project done, which is, I mean, the whole thing's a priority, but having it done by the schools is probably the higher priority, everything north of, uh, Seventh Street.
That was where I was going with it and, um, um, the fact that they do need to pick it up a little, that was kind of where I was going to.
Yep.
They bring a third utility crew in last week, which helped out a lot.
Yep.
Well, you you guys have done a good job, I mean, you got your stuff done on time, I'm just worried about that other company.
Yeah, they have, uh, they believe they're planning to reclaim the area, uh, north of Fourth Street, so where there's blacktop today, that'll get reclaimed, um, up through Twelfth Street. They won't go through the inner, through the roundabouts that were done previously, but, uh, so they believe they're plan, planning to that next week and shape it by the end of that week, so they're paving by, uh, August fifteenth, the week of August fifteenth. Uh, so at that point, once it's paved, um, the road is traversable, they can get some striping in there for safety and things like that, but. Uh, I I don't see any hindrance to get to the school especially during that time. They might be doing some work behind the curb in some areas that we thought would be done a little sooner than that, but I think the road will be open, open to traffic at least.
That would be nice because some people are starting to get impatient, so.
Absolutely, yep, I understand.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, the public invited to be heard on matters that are not on the agenda. Does anybody want to speak to the council? Seeing none, um, we'll go to item number eight, ordinance three twenty-six, amending chapter thirty point zero four of the city code relating to city council members serving on the planning commission.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one. Um, as we had talked at the July fifteenth council meeting, um, we were, uh, intending to bring an amendment, which we do have in front of you here tonight, relating to adding, uh, not more than two, uh, but always have at least one, uh, member of the council on the planning commission. And this would be intended to be used four times at which we do not have citizen applicants, uh, to fill, uh, necessary seats, as you're aware of, the planning commission. For about three months now, we've been down to, uh, three members appointed out of a five-member board. The language you came up with on, uh, the ordinance proposal here tonight for you, uh, was worked on in association with city attorney, um, Scott Riggs. And the language you can see is on that ordinance, which the, uh, includes the underlined language to have at least one, but not more than two. And again, only to be considered when citizen applicants are not available, uh, to serve on the planning commission, and then, uh, the one thing we wanted to add at the end, so there was not confusion about, uh, when we do get citizen applicants back, uh, in the fold. It says that when citizen applicants become available, uh, during the time at which two council members have been appointed, the most recently appointed council member will relinquish their seat. So that was the language we came up with you, uh, to review here tonight, um, on a related and, uh, parallel path, uh, or close to parallel as we could get it. Um, the zoning ordinance does need to be amended as well. Uh, we did actually have the provision in the zoning ordinance to allow for, um, up to two, uh, council members on the planning commission, but we had some other language, um, to match what we are proposing here tonight, obviously pending any discussion we have here with the introduction, but, um, that would be, uh, pushed onto the planning commission at their August twenty-fourth meeting, we are required to hold a public hearing per state statute for any zoning ordinance amendment. And then that would come back in front of the council in September, uh, when that process is kind of played it, played out, so. Really two related matters there, but we're just looking at the first portion related to the city code here tonight, uh, for that introduction, and any questions you might have?
Okay, so then the public hearing is held by the planning commission in this.
Yeah, the planning commission does the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment portion, which has parallel language, it matches, um, to be consistent. In a nutshell, it was just missing a couple of key words for what we have in the proposed language here tonight, so it just will mesh them together nicely.
So then we have to hold a public hearing on this one then, too?
No, we are not required per our charter, we're not required to have public hearing for our city code amendments, we are required by state law to publish ten days' notice, um, on our website and then put a notice out on our bulletin board, which would be done tomorrow if you pass the first reading here tonight.
So, I'm confused because it talks about the ten-day notice, October second of two thousand and twenty-two?
August.
August second.
Oh, August.
We would post that tomorrow, yep.
Okay.
I didn't even catch that, do we? So does that, um, do you want?
Oh, I have that in the ordinance.
Oh.
Good catch.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance.
Never seen it. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll make this one, but, um, does that mean as of tonight, then, you can appoint me to the planning commission?
No, we have to go through.
Have to wait until the.
Have a second reading in August, then it has to be published, and this, uh, would have that be published on August twenty-fifth. So then, we actually have to have the zoning ordinance amended following this process, that it's gonna take through probably the end of September until we could get to that point. The nice thing is, we have an appointment potential that you need to interview the applicant for the planning commission to fill at least two of the, um, or one of the two empty seats that we have in the planning commission tonight, so.
That's good because it's tight corum.
Future use, I believe at this point, but, um, yeah, it takes a little time to get through the amendment process.
All right, I'll make the amendment to, um, uh, for ordinance, uh, three two six, amending chapter thirty point zero four of the city code relating to the city council members serving on the planning commission.
Second. And there's a second, thanks. There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Sean, any discussion? And you'll make that correction on that.
Ooh, I'll hear the dates, October twenty-first, yep.
With that, um, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, then, on item number ten, approving amended limited-use permit with mind out, that didn't take long to come back, did it?
So, we pretty well knew it was gonna come back, so we had a provision in there and we initially adopted it, that it wasn't in the agreement, but it was in their, um, cover letter that they had language that said within, uh, I think it was within ninety days of us entering into the new limited-use permit, that we'd have to correct, um, ADA issues. Uh, they discussed it, they brought back, uh, revision to the agreement that basically says that, um, the ADA compliance issues with that trail would be, uh, able to be handled, uh, through the city's transition plan, uh, that, for the Public Works Department to correct those, uh, ADA issues as funding allows, and basically, as we pointed out, they're very minor approach issues from, basically, on that trail from like Highway twenty-one, just heading up the hill a little bit, that area there, nothing major. We certainly have more, um, pressing matters for ADA on sidewalks and trails elsewhere in the city, so that was good language to get in there. And then finally, they just amended their cover letter to note that if the agreement ever runs out in the future, it'll continue on a month-to-month basis instead of just ending, um, on the date of expiration, so both positive changes, so, um, staff would recommend, uh, the amended limited-use permit for approval here tonight.
Okay, any questions? Otherwise, I'd take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Bruce, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, um, next item under, now we're to general business, potential SmartLink presentation.
Uh, yes, I spelled it out in the memo, pre- pretty simple, um, the county wants to start kind of getting in front of councils a little bit more. And a few weeks ago, I had Alan Herman, who works for the SmartLink Mobility Management Program, wondering if our council would be interested in just kind of hearing from them and what they offer in the area and that sort of thing, and so before I scheduled it, I wanted to make sure you guys were even interested in hearing first.
Uh, I missed what you said, I was typing.
Oh, yeah, no worries, so, Alan Herman, who is a supervisor with the SmartLink Mobility Management Program in Scott County, uh, is interested in speaking to the council kind of of what the current offerings are in New Prague and, um, any, hearing any questions or concerns you all may have. And before I went to schedule it, I wanted to make sure that the council was actually interested in hearing from.
I'm on that committee and it's in recess because of COVID and it hasn't returned. Um, so I have no idea what that guy's coming here to tell you guys, I'm pretty sure you guys already know it. So, truth be told, we resettle two counties and we get very little attention, but, uh, SmartLink, um, does a good job, but TrueLink over here on the Lusuer County side will bring you anywhere, so. So when it comes, so.
Yeah, I'm seeing a little bit more presence of the SmartLink buses, though.
Yeah, I have two.
So, I I still would be interested in hearing what Alan has to say. I would like to suggest that we reach out to Praha and Mala and maybe the Well, um, to allow them to just know about the presentation so that they could learn about the service as well.
I would say Phillips Square and Milpan would be better because, um, Praha, they have their own.
Have a bus, yeah, but they still have independent living, right, and the Well, um, has kids that are in need of transportation at times. So I just think as a courtesy, just to let some of these populations know.
I can do that.
And the only thing that, um, I wanted them to change was, um, um, they end at seven and, um, they used to end as of twenty seventeen, it was, went from nine P M. to seven P M. So they, so you can, I could get transportation to the committee meeting, but I couldn't get a ride home, so.
You probably did that on purpose.
Okay, so set something up.
I can set something up for that.
Josh, if they do have presentation materials, if you, if they do have those available to put with a packet, so we can look at it before they get here.
Yep.
So we can get.
I can do that.
Yep, and maybe we'll make up some copies of it, too, and I can deliver them to the apartment building, so, yeah, that, it it's a good deal, Lisa Fries was on that, I don't know what happened with Alan Herman. All right.
Um, the next item on general business is review of THC-related information.
Yes, so at the last meeting, uh, kind of right at the end, unscheduled a little bit, um, because Scott Riggs was here, the city council started having discussions about the, uh, new THC regulations and what we can and can't do as a city. There were brief discussions about a possible moratorium at that point and what we wanted to do. The Community Development Office, uh, Ken and then by extension Kira kind of, um, did some looking into this a little bit, we got stuff from Scott Riggs, we got stuff from the league, uh, and Kira really outlined a lot of what is now included in your packet. I guess looking at it, all of it, and speaking with some of the other cities in the county, uh, at this point, I would like to recommend that we go the moratorium route. The ordinance that is included in your packet calls for a twelve-month moratorium, but as written in that ordi- ordinance, that can be pulled off at any time. Um, I guess from a sta- staff's perspective, I don't necessarily want to dive headfirst into this and kind of be the guinea pig on how we're rolling, and I want to make sure that we take enough time to do this right. Going to moratorium will allow us to really kind of study the issue a little bit, see what other cities are doing, um, and then by the end of it, we can decide to do a whole bunch, we can decide to do nothing. But it does kind of control the situation a little bit before, uh, we kind of get too deep into it, so.
I don't mean to keep dominating you guys, I'm sorry, but, um, yes, a twelve-month moratorium would probably be the best answer because you, we have no idea what they're gonna come up with next and how fast it'll happen. You know there's gonna be more action on this. If we get a new governor, this might get rescinded, you know what I mean?
And and it's, and if we decide, like I said, that twelve-month moratorium can be pulled off at any time, so we could decide next meeting that we could, we're done.
The moratorium will hold it to what it's at now, so they're they're not gonna have to change anything.
Correct.
This guy has got it in stock, that guy is, um, um, waiting, he's gonna set up a whole thing. So I don't want to see him set up that whole thing and spend all that money to do that, and then we put a moratorium that says that they can't do that, so. The moratorium is gonna read that we stay exactly the way it is now, and, um, we'll see how things go.
Correct, so the moratorium basically freezes everything in place, and so, um, if if there's, they'd be selling right now, they'd be allowed to continue to sell, um, if we pass the moratorium and a business decides to jump in, say we had a Burger King in town and they wanted to start selling it, um, they would not be able to as long as the moratorium's in place unless they came in before we put the moratorium in.
Rick, if I could just, I'm not sure if I understood what you just said there, there's one person selling it and another person's gonna, gonna sell it?
This tobacco shop has got a, a, a setup about yea big.
Okay.
And that tobacco shop is going to do the same thing.
But hasn't done it yet.
Got it all yet.
But then you said you don't want to stop them.
Yeah, we don't want to stop any, you know, if the, if the guy just spent money on on display cases and he's getting the stock in, um, I would give him the same opportunity we're giving this guy.
Well, if we pass this today, that second person you mentioned is not gonna be able to stock it tomorrow.
Right, is that true?
Yeah.
Right, so that's why I just want to make sure I have an under.
Then that would be, then, then that would be a problem, because then we're allowing this guy.
We're not allowing.
Do it, and.
State is.
This guy here isn't gonna be able to do it.
Tobacco shop by Coburn's is already selling it. They were, at least they were prior to Fox today as far as I'm concerned.
I went in there just the other day and asked if I could see how they're displaying it and, um, because I wanted to know about the gummies, I don't want. Well, she, she said, she said she's not selling it, and I don't know why, um, or she isn't set up for it, I don't know why she told me that, because I wanted to see how the gummy bears are being, um, sold. I don't want them things ended up in kids' mouths. And, um, so it's something I'm watching. So I, I don't know, um, but, um, if they've got it all in stock, then the moratorium would be fine, but if they don't. So, before we put this in, can you contact them, because we don't want to allow one tobacco shop to sell it and not the other.
So I would say the, um, that's certainly something we can do. I would caution against favoring one business like that, because it's possible that a non-tobacco shop might want to sell and say, well, why did, can't you wait for me as well, or, um, I think.
Explain how you could do what you just said, how would we do that?
Well, well, so, I mean, if we were gonna contact this other tobacco shop, say, okay, when are you gonna have it in stock? And we'll put the moratorium in place at that point. I would caution against that, only in that if a non-tobacco, because under the current, um, state laws, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, a- anybody can sell.
Yep.
And so, um, if we say, well, we want to make sure both tobacco shops have a, have a chance to get in first, well, what, let's, let's say another business downtown, non-tobacco shop wants to sell, and they're like, well, my product's only three weeks out, so can we wait for another three weeks so I can get in? And then someone else says, well, I want in, but I'm four weeks after that, like, I think at some point, we either kind of need to do it or not do it.
For for that to happen, we wouldn't be able to pass it tonight, then.
Correct.
Correct, okay, yeah.
Or you could look at passing it tonight, putting it in place, and I will follow up tomorrow morning with the tobacco shops. If the one out at by Coburn's had it in stock and has sold it already, then they would be in compliance. And they would be allowed to continue to sell it. Maybe they're just out of stock right now. But if he has sold anything over his counter, then he has.
Been fit on the moratorium anyway.
Yep.
Um, is there any way that we can regulate and and so that them kids do not get them gummy bears, it would be nice if they weren't even allowed here.
Well, they can't sell to anybody.
They're not gummy bears, I mean, they can't be in.
They be gummy whatever.
They, but they can't be in, I thought they can't have kids-type.
Yeah.
Looks and feels.
Probably just be like a little gummy square or something like that.
To your point, Rick, you have to be twenty-one to go into that shop anyways to buy whatever you're going to buy. So I really don't see little kids unless a twenty-one-year-old has, is irresponsible with it and leaves, or a parent for that matter, and leaves it lay around and a kid sees it, you know? I mean, that's the unfortunate part about it with the, the way the state put this regulation on, but, or allowed this to, to move forward. But, um, it's not just the tobacco shops, though. I've heard from bar owners that are also thinking about it, now there's going to be THC-laced beer, and there's going to be THC other drinks available. And now all of a sudden, they haven't been in stock yet because they're still deciding if they want to do that or not. And, but now if we put the moratorium on, now we've excluded them and we've just made two guys in town. And I'm assuming that Holiday Hy-Vee, they might be looking at it too, or any of the other independent gas stations.
You know, I do that. When we get further into, I like a bit of understanding because I kind of thought malt beverage or whatever beverage wouldn't be involved in this part of it.
It can be in the liquid.
I know you can make it with beer and whatnot, but I, I didn't think, I thought that was licensed through a different avenue.
So I, I think the way that it got written was that alcohol facilities are not allowed to sell, is that right?
A product on their own, yeah, it's not a related enough product per statute under Minnesota off-sale liquor.
It would have to be involved with the sale of an alcohol.
Yeah, so, so, so if it's in the product and alcohol establishment, like, like a liquor store can sell it, otherwise, I don't think they're allowed to.
They won't, after we do this moratorium.
Alcohol license to address that.
And, and that, and that would depend, yeah, that, that would, hopefully, throughout the moratorium, that would allow us to study and how exactly we want to do that, if we want to do it.
What are the other cities in Scott County doing?
And it sounds like over the next two weeks, every city will be, starting tonight, every city will be looking at put a moratorium in place, at least temporarily, in the short term to kind of look at it a little bit more.
As long as we can lift it off, I mean, I, I, I don't mind that, but as long as we can lift it off, I don't want to get sued for, you know, you got, you got him, all of a sudden he's, Shell is adding THC to it, and.
We have no plans on doing that, so.
And the other, the other thing that we got to look at is, um, that might change. I mean, I heard the governor the other day saying he's wants recreational marijuana, so.
Well, I, I don't understand what is so difficult of, we just said you have to require a tobacco license, then you get them for that, and then we set a fee, let's say it's as much as our intoxicating liquor at twenty, what is that, twenty-one hundred dollars? We just get, you have to have a THC license for twenty-one hundred dollars. That's going to keep some people that do want it and some people that aren't going to be. I, I don't know, I don't understand what, it's a legal product in the state of Minnesota. And I, I know this, the legislature screwed the whole thing up by sneaking it in there and it, they're dumping it on us, but, I don't know why it seems so difficult to do this. I mean, I've, you know, I often get frustrated at how slow the political government is at things, but, um.
Well, I would support the moratorium, but I would probably have a little, um, I totally agree that you need to do it in a thoughtful manner, but I, I guess my, my thinking that we should be able to do it much quicker than the way I've kind of felt the vibe coming from you that, you know, if we, I imagine we should be able to get, um, boilerplate licensing within the next month or two, that would work for us.
And, and I, and I think it could, I think just the hesitancy on our part is the fact that it is brand-new to us and we're still really unsure what we can and can't do with the state. Um, and part of it is too, I don't know if I necessarily want to put us out to be the guinea pig that everyone else kind of stops and sees, well, okay, is this going to work for New Prague or not, and how's that going to work for us?
Well, like I said, I think we can get something thoughtful, but my greater concern is that we have a moratorium in place and we feel comfortable with it, but yet we're, it's being sold all over the place. Because it, it doesn't affect the people that are selling it already. So if we're trying to accomplish something, um, we need to act more quickly. And I agree, we shouldn't be the guinea pig, but I'm hopeful that there would be other work being done, especially if we ask the league for, and I'm sure the league has already started, already has, uh, licensing examples for us to look at.
And, and I, I think not only that, I know Ken has had, um, scale meetings myself where this is already coming up at scale meetings and people are kind of already sharing amongst each other what, what people are looking at and doing. And so, I mean, there is work going on behind, behind the scenes, I guess, if that makes sense.
So, I mean, the risk that we're trying to protect, uh, is there right today, so.
All right, well, if you want that moratorium, we, we can take action on that and we'll have that in place and then, um, get us more information. I know it's going to be coming in slow and spotty, but.
And, and I would hope that we can, in the next few months, at the absolute latest, we can get something back in front of you.
You know, even if, even if we knew that, um, um, we'll hook at the tobacco license or, or whatever, you know what I mean? It would be nice to have at least an idea of how everybody else is doing it and how it's going to work, I mean.
Specifically, what are the concerns?
I know from our side, we've had conversations, the concern is putting something in place that we can't necessarily enforce.
I meant, what, what is the concern about what the state passed and the product that's being sold? I mean, what's, what's driving this? Is it a concern for the use of the product?
I, I guess from what I've seen, the concern seems to stem from the fact that it did seem to come in last minute and there wasn't a lot of conversation from the state. And so, we're not getting a, a ton of guidance, it's, they've kind of just said it's kind of up to cities.
To do what? I mean, they, they, they passed that the product can be used and sold. So they do have some parameters around it, so I'm not, because I've, I've read the paper and I've heard about other cities talking about moratorium, but it, it never goes into any detail of what their concern is.
I think, um, some of the cities on draft language I've seen, I don't think anybody's adopted anything yet. Specifically would be for like children getting access, so requiring sales to occur from behind a counter, that type of thing. I think it's probably number one that I've seen on any draft language so far, just really children and underage getting hands on it, whether it be stealing it or there could be underage sales, which is more of an enforcement thing, and I.
Sure.
I don't know if that would be much different than a.
Tobacco or alcohol, um, and, and I think part of it also is to put in ordinance because it's, it's not well-defined in state statute on who the supplier is and how it is tested. Because could somebody conceivably mix up a batch in their kitchen and put it out for sale and say, hey, it's only five milligrams? We don't know that. Um, that would be an aspect that we would have to look at our ordinance also in time, as to what we are going to enforce in that. And if we go out and make compliance checks, okay, that person was under twenty-one and they sold, that's a violation. But now that we send people that are old enough to go in and, and purchase product, are we going to actually send that in to get tested and make sure they're in compliance with the dosage? So that would be things that we have to work through. Um, and to Sean's point, hey, we pick a number on what we're going to charge for that license. The idea is we have to have some, a factual basis for that charge. So if we are going to put this whole process in place, what is that going to cost the city to do that process?
Okay, all right, so, so state statutes have outlined that it has to be in a locked glass cabinet, or it has to be behind the, okay.
No.
Okay.
And another one that was brought up too, is some cities are looking at not allowing them to be sold at, um, like pop-up tents or that type of establishment, food truck type.
Right.
But wouldn't we be the ones that would control that license? Yeah, so why would?
I mean, we would be creating our own license.
No, I know, but I mean, so if the pop-up, somebody puts a pop-up tent, they would still need a license or else they would be in violation of.
Yes, if we were to allow it, that'd be.
And we can close it down, or if some, if Jim or one of the patrolmen saw it, or, you know.
But, but only if we say that it has to be behind a locked counter or it has to be behind. That pop-up tent could have a locked cabinet that the product is kept in, right? So just because it's a pop-up tent, it would still have to meet whatever other regulations are in place.
My point is, is the license, they wouldn't be able just to do a pop-up tent, they would have to apply through the city, there'd be a review process, and then whether you, you know, the chief of police signs off on it, or the, the city administrator, or whatever. Yeah, I just, I, I, still just trying to figure out what, believe me, I don't like being in this situation. It would have been so much easier to have this discussion at the state level and everybody be on the same page. But again, I, I can see just too many issues coming up with this moratorium and dragging on and on and on, not necessarily from you guys, but just because government moves super slow. And if we're sitting there waiting for everybody else, but Minneapolis and St. Paul and everybody else is doing it, I'm going to feel the pressure from people that are going to say, this is a legal product, why can't I get it in New Prague? You know?
And I don't.
And to, and just to limit the moratorium, and let's say there's only two people that have had it so far, they can jack that price up, there's no competition whatsoever. And let alone now we're people that are still on the fence because it's only been legal for thirty days. And some other business owners are trying to figure out, do I want this, don't I want it, whatever? And now we're prevent, we're preventing them from, from moving forward.
I think, again, I think that the twelve-month moratorium is just a number, but we could move as quickly as we can with it also. But to Josh's point, we want to look at what is the movement, what, what is happening out there with it?
And I don't know why we'd have to necessarily rely on other cities, um, to come up with a program first, you know? I mean, I think we're.
Not necessarily, it, it just has to be an all-encompassing, because, um, because I, Josh and I talked earlier, if we tied it to the tobacco ordinance, um, that might be an option also because if they have a violation with tobacco, then it's the civil penalty. If they had a violation with the THC sales, it still affects their tobacco license. So that, that could be an option for that direction, that it would be part of that tobacco license.
Right.
You need a tobacco license to sell it, it's, well, ours is two hundred dollars.
Yeah, you need a tobacco license, but then you need like a rider on it that says you can also sell THC.
Yeah.
And that license is whatever we decide, two thousand dollars. Uh, that doesn't seem, that's what, that was the point, I was kind of getting at, that you would, there still is compliance checks, there's still, it still allows people to apply for a tobacco license first with this rider on it.
And you got, um, the city, uh, gets their, um, money from the, um.
It's still twenty-one plus and there's going to be compliance checks, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, it doesn't seem like it's all that difficult, I think we're making it, the, the cities are making it difficult with.
Where we're scared, you know, you don't, you, you, for my fifty-six years on this planet, you get caught smoking weed, Jimbo's going to come over and take it, you to jail. Now all of a sudden, today.
Possess it, I can't do anything if you're just smoking.
But do you get my point? I mean, and now, now all of a sudden, and then you, um, go ahead and do the hemp and sneaking into a farm bill and, which I'm good with, I'm okay with it. But now recreational's still hanging out there, so you're going to set up a bunch of rules to do this hemp, and then the recreational's going to get passed. Everyone take three senators and that recreational will be passed.
Yeah, I, again, it doesn't seem like it's that difficult, I'd be more in favor of trying to get something done quicker than sooner and maybe we've only made it a thirty-day moratorium, I mean, let's look at it the other way. Instead of doing a year moratorium, let's do a thirty-day, and then we could extend it if we still don't have any movement on it. But if we, you know, that puts the onus on city staff or some other, you know, let's start collecting the data from the League of Minnesota Cities and.
Other businesses are scratching their head too because they don't know exactly what they want to do either, you know?
And I think the start date, we should at least give businesses a time here to make a quick decision, maybe the start date of the moratorium is August fifteenth, or, you know, two weeks out, or a month out, or something that.
Then why have it?
Why, yeah, why have it? Because everyone's going to start selling tomorrow, so they, it doesn't fall.
Well, they have to get it, I guess, first, and I, from what I've heard, there's shortages everywhere of it.
They would just buy it from the tobacco guy and sell one piece to some one person, that's all you have to do. We could all sell it tomorrow.
And we could all sell it today. I could have sold it yesterday, yeah, I know.
All this inflation, yeah, we're going to need the extra cash, why don't we just put it, put it downstairs and sell it out of here?
And not allow other people to sell?
But we literally could tie it to a liquor, or a, either a liquor or tobacco.
Tobacco was, that would be the.
Or a liquor license, yeah.
If, you know.
Well, the state has said it's not part of a liquor.
For off-sale.
Yeah.
But for on-sale, it could be part of.
So. Tie it to those two things.
Really, we have to tie it.
Charging people.
Well, write up a good motion, see what you got.
Well, I want to get everybody else's feedback on it. I mean, I think we could.
I think you got it, we don't know what to do. But you know, um, uh, if it's going to go thirty days, doesn't make sense to have it.
I, I think part of looking at what other cities, cities are doing is maybe trying to understand some best practices or what other cities, you know, Shakopee has this, Savage has that, and maybe there's some commonality and, which really makes sense. Instead of just trying to do it on your own.
And we have ours and Shakopee has theirs, and we can certainly modify it at any other, any time.
Because the county could even do one. A county-wide one, correct?
Sounds like they're not planning on that.
They're not planning on it, okay.
Uh, planning director for the county.
Okay.
Any political body doesn't really want to touch it, they're dropping an eyelid, just like they did the mask.
Well, this was the tobacco ordinance back in the.
Nineties.
Back in the nineties, you know, same thing, the state, the state let it up to local governments and, and then finally just made the mandate, but. I'll make a motion that we, um, give, uh, city staff three months to come back to us and, uh, with the ordinance.
So you want a three-month.
No, I'm not saying a moratorium.
But the issue on the table is the moratorium, can we act on that first?
I guess we'd have to.
You don't want to vote for the moratorium, but I'll place it.
Okay.
Of record as recommending a resolution, that's what we requested.
Okay.
To produce.
Okay, that's, okay.
Fails, then do what you want.
Okay. I was just trying to move it along, but you're right with the point of order. So do you want to make that motion?
I make the motion to approve the ordinance as it's presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it just to do the motion.
Okay, and there's been a motion and second, any other discussion?
That would be for a year, right?
Up to a year.
Up, up to a year.
To a year.
I guess my comments are as before, I support the moratorium, that's what we asked, what we talked about last meeting, and we talked about doing it last meeting at even, and to produce the time and reduce the risk that's out there. For un, unlicensed people selling it as quick as possible, we can't do anything about the people selling it already, but certainly we can, um, stop the sale of it with individual people or other people that may not qualify to sell it under our future licensing agreement. So it does reduce the risk to the community, so that's what I'm thinking about.
Um, I, I totally agree with what you just said, so I'll be voting yes.
So how are we going to prove if somebody was selling it yesterday? They ordered some in from wherever.
Well, if they had it yesterday, then they're covered under the moratorium.
No, but how is Jim going to police that? They could say, oh, well, I did it before this moratorium.
Well, let's.
I saw, I, you know.
I would.
I don't know, I mean.
In, the initial, if you guys pass something tonight, I would have officers go out tomorrow to all the convenience stores, all retail areas, and just check, do you sell THC, and get that verbally from a store manager or somebody. And we'll document that as best we can. If somebody else pops out in a week and says, oh, no, I was selling, it may be difficult to enforce anything on that, but at least people are unnoticed then.
They would also be able to, uh, produce a document of where they purchased it from.
They should be able to, yes, produce paperwork.
They can't make it.
Right.
So there's documentation that you could get, but certainly there's going to be ones that fall through the cracks.
Yeah.
And at least there's something to stand on, so I, I agree with you, Bruce.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor of the moratorium?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
So yeah, it would be interesting to know what your results are, Jim, um, when you send people out and. you send people out, and, so, the, it would be nice to know if this, this convenience store is, is selling it, because that, that's where we're gonna run into our fight, 'cause they were selling it this morning, then it's covered under the moratorium and they can sell it, the guy down the street can't.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll pull the stats together and get them out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, twenty, twenty-three budget meeting workshop date and times?
Uh, yes, the calendar has been included for the next couple of months, um, kinda for both, uh, item eleven C and eleven D, to set up a time for a budget meeting workshop, as well as a, uh, special interview, or a special council date for planning commission interview, not to steal your thunder.
We just have one applicant, or was there two?
Just one, yeah, only one, right now, there was no applicant, but it was for-
Do we really need to interview him, can't we, we're down two, can't we just give him the position? I don't know.
I, I guess that would be up to you guys, whether, I mean, it's planning commission, it's-
Well, I think in all fairness, we've interviewed everyone else, and so it would be, in my opinion, just, uh, a good thing to do.
Meet and greet.
And, and we could always set it up for right before a standing council meeting, so you, you-
Yeah, I haven't covered it in here, we'll just do it on-
Ten, fifteen minutes early, and-
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think we'll turn him down, but-
No.
But if we wanna talk to him, that's fine.
So-
If he comes in here drunk, we can turn him down.
So, uh, which council meeting would you like us to set that up before?
As soon as possible. Um, I would say the fifteenth, please.
Okay. And budget workshop, I know at the last meeting, uh, Sean had mentioned-
Going into September.
Going into September, if possible. Um, I know Robin and I are getting close to kinda wrapping up the stuff on our end, and so once we do, I will get that sent over to you, so you can have a couple of weeks at least to digest it, uh, before we all sit down together.
Well, I am gone the week of September twelfth.
Oh, shoot, I was gonna say, that looked like a good week.
I'm sure, sorry, Josh, did you met, say that you're not, um, planning on having budget meetings until September?
Not necessarily, I mean, we could probably go as soon as August fifteenth, I just know that, uh, Sean had mentioned, he, he requested the last meeting that we go into September, but obviously that's up to the council of when we end up meeting.
Okay.
Does, uh, September eighth work, which is a Thursday?
That would work for me.
Yep, it'd work for me.
September eight, twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah.
'Cause my calendar was clear until twenty forty.
This would be forty-one.
Any chance to do it before the city council meeting on the sixth?
Do it September first?
Uh, September sixth, rather.
Oh, do it before the council meeting?
I'm open that, I could do that one too.
How, how big's the agenda?
That gets to be a long-
I, I mean, it, it would be budget workshops, we'd be going over, um, the, the kind of in the beginning here, we'll be going over basically levy stuff, so general fund, EDA, uh, preliminary numbers, that sort of thing, so, if last year's any indicator, we had three meetings that were all two or three hours long, so, really depends on how, I mean, how we could, if we have an hour or two, we could cover what we can in an hour or two and go from there, um-
So what, five-thirty and September sixth?
So half hour?
No.
September sixth is the city council meeting, so we'll be in here at six.
I prefer not to stack meetings, it just gets to be too long of a day.
Yep, especially that one could be too, really-
I might be able to make the September eighth one, I, I thought I might have something going on, but I can't remember what it was.
Okay.
But-
I could do the seventh, too, I mean, I can do a, the seventh, eighth, ninth.
So the seventh would work better for me, but I, I can make the eighth, eighth work too, if I have to.
I don't know if I can do the seventh, what happens if we did do August, not that I wanna have three meetings, 'cause I'm on the gulf and planning, but if we did Monday the twenty-second?
Does that give you enough time to put materials together?
Yeah, I mean, we, I should be able to get them out too by the fifteenth, and so that would give you guys about a week then, to look at them.
So what did you say, August what?
Twenty-second.
All right.
That means I got three days in a row of-
And would that be, uh, what time of day would that be?
Uh, that would be up to you all, the only thing I have going is, uh, my wife has a doctor's appointment over the lunch hour, that I gotta watch the kids, but other than that, I, I don't know whether you guys wanna meet during the day or in the evening.
It has to be during the day, during the evening.
Evening, yeah.
What time would you like to start?
I'll do three meetings, but I'm not gonna take a vacation, David.
How about five-thirty?
Instead of the budget meeting?
Can you do as early as five?
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna be out of town, but-
Okay.
Probably could do five, yeah.
Bruce will be out of town.
The twenty-third?
Oh, the twenty, oh.
Well, the twenty-third, he has a golf board meeting.
Oh, and I've missed the last two, so I probably shouldn't miss that one. And the twenty-fourth is a planning meeting that I have, which, is that guy gonna be appointed?
If we have one appointed and everybody else shows up, we'll be good.
Yeah.
Now, you better come, quorum there, buddy.
Twenty-fifth?
That works.
Uh, I cannot do the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
Me neither, I'm out of town.
What about the, uh, twenty-ninth, that'd be the next Monday?
That works for me.
Yeah.
I could do that.
And we'd, I'd say we'd probably maybe, we have utility board, what, at three-thirty, so, I mean, but I don't think we'd start before five, five-thirty, so-
Ooh, that's a long day for Bruce.
No, no, we're retired.
Do you wanna say five-thirty on the twenty-ninth of August?
Well, we know you got lunch in the fridge back here, but- You loaded it up.
Um, I'm sorry, what, what time?
Five-thirty on the twenty-ninth, does that work?
Yeah, it works with me.
Me too. Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, the next item is request from the park board to amend the park equipment fund budget to partially fund outdoor performance facility feasibility study.
Yeah, so at our July nineteenth park board meeting, we had, uh, Dan Gardner and Steve Frost with the Outdoor Performance Facility Group attend the meeting, um, they had not previously attended, or they had not been at a park board meeting, um, since, uh, January eleventh. So they've had a number of group, uh, committee meetings for the outdoor performance facility, they've kinda narrowed down their preliminary list of sites, and, um, as they get closer to, you know, obviously selecting a site which very likely will end up being on city, uh, park property, um, they presented to the park board the idea to, um, continue on, uh, their efforts, and the park board made the motion that they felt they should have some skin in the game from the city perspective, and, uh, voted to, uh, recommend that the council approve their contribution from the park equipment fund of, uh, five thousand dollars towards a feasibility study, as long as the park board could approve that scope of work, and ensure that the sites will be in the public best interest, and long-term consideration of the city's ability to manage and maintain. Um, I know they've reached out to a couple of, um, engineering firms and others to, um, kinda talk about what scope could include, uh, but this would obviously have to come back to the park board, and, um, could even come back to the council if you'd wanna, um, have, uh, some review on that as well, I think they'd be just fine with that. But we do have over seventy-five thousand dollars in our park equipment fund, which, this is exactly what that fund is, uh, intended to be used for, is new and expanded park facilities. Um, at this point, they don't know if this is gonna be a, you know, one million dollar project, or five million dollars, you know, we have no idea, but, um, this feasibility study will help, um, look at sites and, uh, determine what could be feasible, and develop a little bit of a, probably a budget consideration, 'cause right now they only have about a hundred thousand dollar pledge, uh, towards a project, and, um, this feasibility study could eat up a chunk of that hundred thousand dollars, but at least, uh, the park board's thought was to get a little bit of a, um, city skin in the game, um, to help steer that, uh, moving forward.
What if the feasibility study doesn't even consider park property, and it doesn't become something on-
Private.
Park property?
I think at this point, they have not identified any, any sites, um, prefer it be on city property, I know their intent would be that they develop a site, obviously with city input, and then turn it over to the city at some point, obviously there's a lot of discussion yet to go on that, so, we can't even say that for sure, but, um, most likely they would not wanna carry this forward, and they would be looking for an entity such as city to manage and maintain it, um, into the future, so, we're very in early stages here, uh, at this point.
In full disclosure, I'm on, uh, this, can be here, this group, I'm not with the selection group that's kinda putting in the work to look at the sites, but, just in full disclosure, I'm involved in this, so, but yeah, it, I, I think there's ninety-nine percent, in my mind anyway, that this would be a project that's gotta walk hand in hand with the city all the way through the process, uh, this group will be involved in the beginning part of it, in design, and fundraising will be some, most of what it's involved in. And like we did with, and my involvement with the library, we raised the money and then gave it to the city, and the city built it. And I expect that's what would happen in this too, that, uh, this group has, is not gonna be building anything or doing any of that part of it, but-
Thanks, Bruce, that's helpful.
Um, Maggie's question of, um, what happens if the feasibility study ends up that the music stadium should be on other property, other than-
That could be problematic for our park equipment fund, in, in all honesty, we may need to have some language that if it turns out it is not through a, um, city property, we may need to have reimbursement from them, so maybe we wanna add that to a motion, 'cause that would be statutorily a problem for that funding, if it ended up not going on public city property.
Especially when we need benches around the park.
You could buy a few benches, that's great.
Yeah, Maggie, it's, uh, I don't know how you wanna word that one, but, because you, you, it, um, you had to have it just in case on the motion.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Where we take action on it?
Otherwise, um, I would take a motion to approve the five thousand dollar expenditure.
I'll make a motion to approve the five thousand dollar expenditure, however the feasibility study comes back, and the contemplation is not involving city property, that, that five thousand dollars will have to be reimbursed to the, uh, parks, uh, equipment fund.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Maggie, seconded by Rick. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item is the authorization of construction of a bullpen at Memorial Park Baseball Stadium.
Again, from park board on July nineteenth, we had Nick Shaniker, uh, from what they call themselves the users of the Memorial Park Baseball Stadium, and they are proposing to, uh, pay for and construct a bullpen on an area, um, no larger than twelve feet wide by seventy feet in length, along the left field fence in Memorial Park Baseball Stadium. Worked with Mr. Shaniker to put together the, um, site map, um, which is shown there, park board reviewed it, staff has reviewed this, we don't believe there's any possible conflict, even if this is one of the sites that is selected for an outdoor splash pad, um, even in talking to Mr. Shaniker, he felt that that was even, you know, well out of the way, but there shouldn't be any conflict, um, with that bullpen in that location, and, um, no expense to the city, so, uh, park board was supportive and passed a motion recommending the council approval to allow the group to, uh, construct that bullpen at that location.
Okay.
I support, uh, supported, I, my question, uh, is, is this group, uh, users group an organized entity or a group?
I don't believe that they themselves are, other than being the Orioles, and, I don't know, Matt, what are the couple of the other entities? I think you're correct, yeah, the same group is kinda peripherally involved, that did the improvements to the ball field for the twenty-eighteen tournament, but he was more representing the Orioles and that group, kinda together.
Yeah, um, I guess my only thinking is just how to manage any liability issues, if they construct something that's not negligent or something, does the park board oversee the project, or gonna, uh, inspect it, or, and it's a trivial thing, but on the other side of it, if something is built and it's open to anybody walking by, and, just, just, just how do you, how are you envision controlling, because I don't believe that they can just build anything at the park.
No, not-
Way-nilly.
No, so this would allow, obviously allow that to happen, I don't know, on the legal department, I have to check with the city attorney on if he thinks we should have any, you know, waiver, um, or anything of that sort, signed from the individuals that are, you know, constructing-
When we did the improvements to the baseball field, the city did them, didn't they?
That was a contract with Ines, and was bid out, so, yeah, that was-
So we, we had the oversight and liability and that type of thing, but when we just have individuals putting a bullpen, what, how do you manage the liability aspects of it, I guess?
I think we have that happening too, just with general field maintenance work, so I mean, this is a little step above that, but, um-
I just, I'm author, I sup, I'm supportive of it, I just would like you to think about that.
Yep.
Matt, is the other bullpen available to anybody, or?
To anyone outside of the city, or outside of the-
Yeah, I mean, if, if I wanted to bring my kid over and have him pitch to me or whatever, could-
The batting cage area, yes.
So it's already open?
The batting cage has to be open to the public.
Yeah, so this would be no different than essentially.
I would assume this is gonna end up getting closed in like the other one.
Oh, so that-
I was, I was not a, the park board meeting if they said they were gonna fence it in or not, but like the other bullpen is fenced in.
It is, so, so I could not access that unless it-
I, I believe not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it'd be fenced in, that's correct.
None of the park is, uh, had, the public does not have access to any of the park, correct?
The baseball field is one hundred percent locked down besides the batting cage area, the batting cage area is open all the time to anyone that wants to use it.
Oh, so what's the difference on that then, versus, uh, pitching, uh, bullpen with a pitching mound on it?
I don't know what's, I don't think there would be a difference, I don't know why anyone would wanna just throw on the batting cage, or in the bullpen area, usually everyone goes to the batting cage area to play catch or anything, 'cause you're in a fully netted area.
Okay.
Say, suppose your batting cage area, if someone's hitting, it wouldn't close any hits, whereas if you were hitting, you could, someone go out and bat in the bullpen, and then balls could go there. I know the batting cage area, the stipulation that the money they got for that, it had to be open to the public, that money was donated by the fire department. But that was one of their stipulations, that, with that donation, it has to be open to the public.
Can they, should we force them to net that in, like the batting cage? Since it's, or at least fence it in to where they couldn't-
It was not originally fenced in, the one in right field.
Yeah.
Then they ended up having issues with passed balls passing the catcher, and ended up being going, going into the driving range, so we ended up putting a six-foot fence behind it, so, I don't know, Ken, they didn't say anything about a fence at all.
I thought he said they were gonna fence it, 'cause it was me on the outside of the fence, and just to, kind of, enclose passed balls and that kinda thing.
I would highly recommend it being fenced in, because-
Yeah.
I'd be, that's the motion? Being constructed, so I assume there's some construction involved, besides it's just a rubber.
It, fencing is what they mentioned at the meeting, yeah.
Okay.
But Bruce, was your point taken care of as far as the liability of who's building it?
Well, I'm comfortable, uh, if, if I can blame Ken for anything that happened.
'Cause baseball committee group is the one that built the-
The history, there's such a long history of, uh, the community working on, that it's just-
And I think-
It should be some oversight from the park board or for city staff or somebody.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for Matt or, you know, Jim Caligier or anything, but I'm sure we would have oversight.
We definitely will be, yeah, just like when they did the right field, there was the baseball committee group that built the right field one, and we were there, I'm not gonna say we were overlooking their shoulder, but we were checking on them every couple hours, hours to see where they're at, and, yeah, we would help out a little bit here and there. And it turned out great, I mean, better than I ever could expect it to be, so, they do good work.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Do you wanna offer a motion? Somebody?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the construction of the bullpen at Memorial Park Baseball Stadium.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made by Sean, seconded by Maggie, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, next item is to buy an ice machine.
Uh, yes, I included a memo in your packet, uh, from the golf board, uh, one of the two ice machines out at the, uh, golf club, uh, was unable to be repaired, uh, and to purchase a new one, especially this summer, uh, there's been a higher demand for ice with the temperatures, so, um, and back on June twenty-eighth, the golf board did approve, uh, the purchase of a new ice machine at the cost of about thirty-four hundred dollars. So, um, and back on June twenty eighth, the golf board did approve, uh, the purchase of a new ice machine at the cost of about thirty-four hundred dollars. So I'm bringing that forward to you all, uh, for final approval.
And will that thirty-four hundred dollars come out of their budget?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Any other questions? And take a motion to approve that then?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Maggie made the motion, seconded by Bruce. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're at the end of the agenda to miscellaneous. And.
I just noticed something on the park board minutes. It says that members present were Brian Molitor, Al Hansen, Matt, Maggie Bass, excuse me. Uh, basically, it says everybody was there and then it goes on the next line and says.
Maggie was not there.
Yeah.
That's, then it says absent Al Hansen, Maggie Bass and Christine.
I was there and wasn't there.
So that needs to be corrected.
Yeah. I showed up for a minute and then I left.
Did you really?
It happened. You stood a storm out of the meeting.
How many, how many people are here? I'm out of here.
So I'll go around the room? If it's appropriate.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant the appeal of, uh, violation for twelve fourteen Olivia Street Southeast New Prairie.
Second.
Thank you for reminding me. There's been a motion to grant the appeal and, and a seconded. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks.
Mine's kind of long. You want me to go first?
Go ahead.
Um, the ice arena, uh, they are going to be, um, they need volunteers for Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. On Friday morning, they're going to pour concrete. That concrete's gotta, um, set for twenty-eight days, if, if that's right. So they're really fighting hard to get everything done by October first so that they can get tryouts and everything like that started. Um, so the, uh, they're, they're looking for as many people as possible. They've got most of tubing down, but now the wire mesh has to be down. Um, any, uh, uh, rebar's gotta be put in place and, um, they have to have everything ready by Friday morning. So they're looking for as many volunteers as they can possibly get. Um, I don't know if we can call the radio station tomorrow and have them say something about, I'll probably do so, I'll work on that one. But, um, I just, I'm not quite sure how we can get the word out that they need people there bad, because it's all gotta be done by Friday morning. Because when some concrete, uh, company comes in, they're just gonna blast at it and it's gonna, they all gotta be set and done and then for twenty-eight days sit there. And they can't be off by one day on any of this. But they're very close and it's, it's gonna be really nice, guys. I mean, they redid a lot of stuff. Um, they got a new, um, 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 ice.
Zamboni?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it's that or they, a piece for it, um, that resurfaces the ice. So, um, like I say, they're doing really good on it and, um, um, they could use help, so. Little notice, no prick on that. And, uh, the driveway is halfway done. I don't know if they did a reclamation on it or, or not. Um, but half of the driveway, um, is, is, is gone and they're putting it, that'll be done by Friday, hopefully. Um, because, um, football will be starting. So that's gotta be done on time. So they're, they're working on a pretty tight schedule over there.
Is Prairie Blacktop doing that?
No.
So I'm holding Blacktop, so.
I don't know if it was them or not. I can't remember who the name was. Um, I've actually got it right here. Um, but, um, so that's, uh, that's the one piece news. And the driveway's a good one, because they went in there, um, before they were just trying to put cold pack in to, to, uh, um, fill them holes. And I don't know if any of you guys have ever used cold pack. It's worthless, you know, it lasts six months to a year. And, um, so they got that done. So the, the million dollars that loaned that they got, they got a lot of stuff done with it, so. I'm happy with them, I know that.
Cool.
So I was down there today and I couldn't even get in the building, so that'll tell you I'm not the one that's gonna be volunteering. But I'll call the radio station in the morning and see if you can ask volunteers to, um, let Tom get the message out. And, um, the other one, scale and stuff like that, I'm not getting on my emails and I don't know why. I didn't get the, I didn't get the message for this last month's scale. And, um, I haven't gotten anything in League of Minnesota Cities in a while. So I don't know what's going on with the emails. I don't know when they changed, if you guys edited out a certain amount, but.
Can I do your junk, correct? So I think I'm picking it right off the bat. Maybe it's going in the junk file.
See other, yeah, see other than that, I'll, I can check with Scale and the league tomorrow to make sure that they've got all of our council members.
No, I'll probably come in and I mean, you'll work on it again.
We can look at it.
Yeah, I, I get it. I get all their emails.
Yeah, I have been.
Are you getting them in your just regular email or are they coming in junk?
No, they're my regular, but they're, they, you have two folders in your email, right? You've got stuff from internal and then other.
It basically says focused and other.
Yes, focused. I was trying to think of the word focused. All right, it's right here and I don't see focus anywhere. I see recently opened, shared or favorites. It's got a quick access all. That's the button I have, is all.
Okay, yeah, if you want to come in tomorrow, we can take a look at that.
This totally changes. Nowhere near the way it used to be, so.
And now that you're mentioning it, I noticed that you returned an email from me, Ken, and it came in spam, which I was really surprised we're in the same.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where Ken's go for mine too, but that was.
But you directed those.
Yeah, Josh set up, uh, citywide.
That's what I said. I said, no, that bald guy is editing my emails. Now I'm gonna have to kill him. All right, yeah, I'll come in and we'll look through it and you can help me with it.
Anything else there?
Nope.
Okay. Do you have an in, you said there's two, an in and a focus? Yeah, so when you open it. Right at the top. Like here? Yours is different too. Yours is different than what you guys see?
Yeah. Well, look at what I see. I mean, it's nowhere near what you.
Oh, my gosh. What is that?
Oh, that's just a different view. You can change.
Yeah, you, I, I can get that one off. That's not the problem.
Bruce, do you have anything?
Whose idea was it to get laptops?
Past administrator's probably idea.
No, I, it's a good idea. It'll just, it's gonna take some shakeoff time.
I, I just was gonna ask a question. Some of the materials, I maybe had to do with the Outdoor Performance Facility, uh, material or somewhere. But somewhere I read that either they or some comment about that the city has, um, a consultant, uh, that's worked on the old AMI site.
So I addressed it at park board. They were mentioning the city center site. We had, um, city engineer, um, SEH work on conceptual con designs over there.
Okay.
That was all I referenced and it seemed like we were actively working on it, but I was.
Okay. Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't remember that anything was done.
If I'm next, I don't have anything.
Nothing else.
I don't have anything.
I was just gonna ask Mitch, next time, can we throw up the camera on here? I'd just like to see how many people are watching. Not now, but I didn't want to interrupt the meeting, but. Is it? I, I don't blame them, so. Okay.
So the internet's dropping? Uh, what's happening?
Been happening every council meeting we've had. CTS is monitoring it tonight.
Oh, are they?
See what was going on. I think it dropped, PD got dropped on something same time at our last council meeting. At forty-five minutes in.
Yep.
So they're watching our meetings.
That's a mandate.
Shouldn't talk so much.
I did want to.
So moved.
Yeah. The payment of that assessment, do we have a receivable for those deferred assessments and that thirty-two thousand dollars is just gonna go towards that receivable? Or is that part, is that street been paid off already?
Uh, I would have to look at, how old was that one?
That was from like, uh, when was the first time?
Chart was done, maybe?
I'll say, yeah, that old ago, I mean, that, that one's probably already been paid off, so it would go into a, a receivable account. I can check with Robin.
So is that going into general fund or?
Yeah, I can check with Robin to see where that money's going.
Okay, I'd be curious.
Bruce had on that. I know when the assessment certificates were put on, they were basically logged on a spreadsheet so that we knew that it was future revenue that we would get at some point. They could have gone up to thirty years from the date that those were filed. Yeah, I don't know the inside of it, so.
Okay.
Yep, I'll check and get back to you.
Thank you. Okay, Maggie, you have nothing? Josh?
Uh, a few things. One, uh, tomorrow begins the filing for city council elections. We'll go August second to sixteenth. Uh, Maggie, Dwayne and Rick are, are all up for this year, so if you'd like to re-up and hang out with us some more every, every other Monday.
Um, when, when is it served?
Uh, starts tomorrow, runs through the sixteenth.
Well, I'll be in tomorrow anyway. I'll probably.
Still five dollars?
I believe so.
So if I threaten to quit, can it be free?
What was that?
If I threaten to quit, if you don't make it free, we'll deb, do it for free.
Might charge you ten dollars. Uh, s, we already covered the grand appeal. Um, it was brought up by, uh, the mayor here that your guys' word was funny when I sent out the, uh, review stuff for myself later tonight. Uh, Dwayne had mentioned that he was unable to type in there very easily. And so we looked at it and Ken and I realized that what we thought we had gotten for you guys as a regular Microsoft Office package, in fact, is some really trimmed down, basic internet style version. Uh, so we will look into that, so hopefully you are actually able to use.
I did the same thing though. I, I got it finally to get that, and then there wasn't a share on that page and it was like, print me one out.
So, so we, uh, we will look into that and hopefully get you guys all squared away, uh, sooner than later.
Because I lost mine then.
And that is all I have.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, nothing more?
Jim? Matt, nothing? City engineer? Okay, so I would take a motion, or, so I do this, right? We're gonna go into closed session. So do we adjourn the regular meeting after that?
Yes, yeah, so the regular meeting will be adjourned when we come out of closed session.
Okay, all right.
So do you need a, uh, action to, uh, go into?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so the motion would be to go into closed session basically based on the language.
Okay.
On the agenda.
So I'll make the motion to go into, uh, closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D dash zero five subdivision three A to conduct a closed meeting. The meeting must be open at the request of the individual who is the subject of the meeting to review performance over the first six months of employment. That should be one year.
Yep.
For the one-year employment of the individual subject to the city council's authority, Joshua M. Tetzloff, city administrator.
So move.
No, I, I made the motion.
Oh, did you? Second, second.
And does Josh have to request this, that the meeting be open?
Yes, so it automatically goes closed. I have the ability, because it's my performance review, if I want to have that open to the public.
Okay. And do you?
Say you.
Let's keep it closed.
Okay.
Good idea.